Good evening and welcome to the May 15, 2023 Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Cynthia Harris, and I want to thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council, we're a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. The commission reviews and is the final decision-making body, unless appealed to the city council, for all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental review associated with those projects. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, environmental reviews, and below-market-rate or BMR housing agreements associated with those projects. We encourage your active participation, whether you're an applicant or an interested member of the public. And I'd like to have our clerk tonight, Ms. Beegan, share how you can participate and win.
Thank you, Chair Harris. So for tonight's meeting, each speaker may address the planning commission once for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment, and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me.
Thank you, Ms. Beegan. With that, I will bring this meeting to order and call the role. Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Farrick.
Present.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Schindler.
Present.
And I am here as well, so we have seven commissioners present, and thus we can begin. Mr. Perata, are there any reports or announcements you'd like to make at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chair Harris and members of the planning commission. So we do have a few staff announcements. So first, on behalf of the planning division and city staff in general, do want to thank the commissioners for their service to the community. So there is tomorrow a training, but also coupled with a reception for advisory bodies, including the planning commission. So that is tomorrow at 5:30. Would just want to remind the commissioners to, you know, to the best of your ability to attend the training and also the reception. So thanks for that, in terms of your service. And then, secondly, we do have a few other updates for projects. So on the upcoming city council meeting next Tuesday, May 23rd, there are two city council call-ups of previous planning commission actions. So one is a call-up from a council member of the 100 Terminal Avenue Project or the Menlo Park Community Campus Project, the planning commission's denial of the noise ordinance or use permit to exceed the noise ordinance in the nighttime hours for discussion by the council. And then the second is the council or the planning commission's approval of the use permit and architectural control at 961 El Camino. So that's the use permit for indoor live entertainment, outdoor seating for dining, as well as alcohol license associated with a restaurant and the architectural control approval for that building. So both those items were called up by separate council members for review through the call-up policy process. And then, secondly, or thirdly, really, we have the planning commission's recommendation of the approval for the revisions to the planned development permit at 700 to 800 El Camino going forward on the 523 city council meeting. So that concludes my reports and announcements. Be happy to answer any commissioner questions.
Do any commissioners have any questions on those announcements at this time? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I do just have a process follow-up question on the two call-ups. What, if any, role is there for planning commissioners, either to participate or be part of the dialogue in that element of the city council meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Schindler. So there is no planning commission role formally. The planning commission has taken action on both those items. This is similar to an appeal, but a different process in terms of it being a council call-up. So the council will now deliberate on those actions and make a determination whether to uphold the planning commission's decision, or modify, or alter that action in any way. Individual commissioners may participate in the meeting as individuals. The commission, though, doesn't have a role in terms of providing any additional information to the council.
Thank you. And I have just one follow-up question, mostly for my own education. Is there likely to be additional information that comes up in those discussions that would be incremental to the information and the context that we had during the planning commission discussions?
You know, that's a great question. I don't think I can provide an answer to that. Certainly, if additional information is provided, you know, to the city staff through any additional comment letters, that would be new information. It may not be necessarily change how the planning commission's deliberation would be, but it would be potentially new information that the council would be considering that the planning commission didn't have. That could be information from the applicant or from community members on that, on the, you know, the call-up in this case. So that is possible, and those, if provided prior to release of the staff report, would be evaluated by staff and provided to the city council for consideration. So in a sense, yes, there could be additional information. I'm not sure that quite gets to the point of the question, though.
It very much does. Thank you so much. That helps me make a decision just about my own interest and availability in attending and participating.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler and Mr. Perata, for answering those questions. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I do.
Commissioner Barnes.
Through the chair, to staff. Are you allowed to say which city council member called up which item?
Yeah, no, good, good point. I did skip over that. For the MPCC or Menlo Park Community Campus Project, that was Vice Mayor Taylor. For the 961 El Camino Real Project, that was called up by Councilmember Nash. Thank you for asking that clarification. I apologize for leaving that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to item D on the agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject that is not listed in the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. As earlier mentioned, you are not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it's very helpful to us. And we cannot act on any items that are not listed on the agenda. So if you, please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item. But today, or but at this point, it's just for general public comment. Ms. Beegan, can you let me know if there's any one for public comment?
Yes, thank you. We do have one person in person for public comment. His name is Chris Comer. Chris, if you'd like, you have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
It's my job, it's our job as architects, to navigate our local ordinances, including the state building code, green codes, Menlo Park fire codes, reach codes, ADU codes, planning, the planning ordinance that we have, our zoning ordinance. We've got our clients' budgets we have to navigate, we have trees, we've got the PG&E Green Book, and we have the desires of our clients, the most difficult of all. And we try to come up with something that's hopefully attractive and well-designed, and we bring it to you. That's our job. In Menlo Park, there's often one additional step, and that step is not found in other municipalities. That's navigating unwritten policies enforced by the planning staff. This is a thing that's been going on for my tenure here. I'm not winning any friends by bringing it up tonight, but I would be here tonight, potentially presenting a project to you, but it is churning at staff level because of one of these unwritten policies. And so, as an example, this one policy is an existing non-conforming concern. Section 16080.030 says if you have an existing non-conforming home and you add to it, you trigger a certain threshold and you end up here. You end up with a use permit. So that's what the ordinance says. But staff says, oh, hold on, you also need to satisfy us that this isn't a demolition. And the applicant says, what is a demolition? And staff says, well, we know it when we see it. We don't have a metric for that. So applicant says, well, where's that in the code? Doesn't exist in the code. So that's an example of one of these items that we've been dealing with over time. Here's another one. We have similar project where there's a, staff said there, we were going to put an easement for access. Public Works rescinded that. Planning Department wants to take a setback from an imaginary easement. There is no easement. Another example I'm dealing with right now is an attached ADU ordinance, where the code says, 16079050 says, you get 1,000 square foot attached ADU, you can forgive 800 square feet. But if you do it, if you do an 801 square foot attached ADU, you can't forgive any of that square footage. That's not in the ordinance, but that's being implemented. So now, I worked as a part of a working group with a consultant about four or five years ago. It was hired to sort of evaluate planning department doings, and this came up not only from me, but from others. So I was sort of validating, I thought, hey, I'm not the only one struggling with this. So I'm here to just urge you, to urge them, urge all of us, to stay to the light and stay away from the darkness. Stay with the code and what's written in the code, and help the applicants by being very clear. If there's something that's a policy and it's important, codify it or throw it out, because you all should be evaluating those policies and council should be approving those policies. But instead, they're sort of sitting on scraps of paper in people's desks, and that's hard for us as applicants to operate. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them at a later date, or now if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Of course, we cannot address anything at this moment, but we appreciate the comment. Are there any other comments at this time?
Thank you, Chair Harris. At this moment, there are no comments or questions, but we can give it another minute to see if any come in.
I think people have had enough time, so I'm going to close public comment at this time and move on to item E, which is the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar tonight. It's approval of the minutes and court report transcript from April 10, 2023, Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone from the commission wish to pull or have a question about that item at this time, or a motion? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Schindler, did you, was that a second, or did you want to make a comment?
Excuse me, both. I'm happy to make the second. I was not in attendance at this particular meeting, but I, having viewed the video, I feel comfortable voting on this.
Okay, thanks. So we have a first by Commissioner Barnes and a second by Commissioner Schindler. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
I'm going to abstain because I was absent.
Okay. Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well. So the motion passes with six commissioners voting yes and one abstaining. Thank you so much. We are now going to move on to item F, which is public hearing, and we have one item under public hearing tonight. It is to consider and adopt a resolution to approve three illuminated signs with bright colors, red, comprising more than 25% of the signage area. Two of the signs would be new wall-mounted signs featuring lettering greater than 24 inches in size, and one freestanding monument sign is also proposed. The signage is associated with the Citizen M Hotel located on the Meadow West Campus in the O, that's Office, zoning district, and regulated by a conditional development permit. It is also to determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guideline Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities and determine this action is consistent with the certified EIR and the First and Second Addenda to the certified EIR for the Facebook campus expansion project. At this time, does staff or the applicant want, wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Harris. Thank you. On the staff this evening, Matt Pruder, Associate Planner with Planning Division, and I don't have any comments or updates to make. I'm happy to answer any questions, but following that, we do have the applicant team in person for an in-person presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to then call the applicant for a presentation.
I am Ben McGee with Citizen M Hotels. It's been a few years since I've seen some of you here in person, just about a year since digitally, so happy to be back here again. Truly is nice to be here again. I hope you guys feel the same. So I'm going to be presenting a small part of the project here, and I believe we have someone on the slide, so if we could run to the next slide. Thank you. So where we started, the 301 Constitution Ave site used to be this very packed, double-parked parking lot next to the extremely busy Facebook campus. Next slide. Something of note and interest, some of the times we were previously here, I specifically remember Riggs having a few questions. I want to throw this up on the screen, just in case you hadn't been by the site in recent months. We have largely completed the bulk of construction. We use the volumetric modular construction type, and you can see here on the screen the way that was sort of staged with those, that's two guest rooms per mod, being stacked up on top of a steel podium. It came together really quite nicely. We've done this enough times in California now that it's got a little bit of a rhythm to us, and I'd be happy to share with you more about that sometime if we get the chance. If you get the next slide, please. This is where we're at as of last week. We are wrapping up construction. We're charging towards an opening this fall, targeting to have a substantial completion or a TCO in September. Signage procurement and kind of the substructure and electrical components have already started installation, but we've been working through the process with getting that signage permit approved and ultimately realized we needed to be here to speak with you all. Next slide, please. So more specifically, why are we here? We've spent a good number of evenings together. We've all seen a lot of things on the screen. Nothing has changed. I'm going to go ahead and refresh you, but look specifically if we could go to the next slide. We're here because of that. An 18-year-old branding decision made by Citizen M that marks all of our hotels across the world. We have a large, red M-ish thing that falls afoul of your guidelines in a couple of ways, and I would like to go ahead and talk to you why we would like to have that sign here as well. Next slide, please. Just to give you a small flavor, I'm not making things up when I say we had this sign everywhere on all of our hotels. Small sampling here, including downtown San Francisco, Los Angeles, in the kind of top middle there, as well as Europe, New York, Asia. We've taken this branding worldwide, and we're happy to have it on the face of many of our buildings. If we could jump to the next slide. Looking back to the last time we were here was actually for a minor modification that ultimately ended up as a major modification. We presented this as the final approved design at that time, where we received all your blessing to go ahead and progress. The signs have stayed true, more or less, to what's here. The only thing we have done is actually slightly shrunk them in size, and we'll be able to look at that in a few slides further on. If we could jump to the next slide. You can see here the second facade sign kind of in the distance, a little bit faded out there, but that is, that is the one that faces Bayfront Expressway as viewed from Bayfront and Chilco. Next slide. Seen a little bit better here from sort of a oblique view of the hotel from Bayfront Expressway. See a bit more clearly there. So then, maybe just to jump to the next slide. I don't think, any of you likely don't know where we're at, but right next to the Facebook campus, right there at Chilco and Bayfront, we're really just next to Facebook. We're surrounded by them. I have colleagues ask, hey, where can I grab a cup of coffee? I'm like, sorry, nowhere. We are currently by ourselves there. I think once the hotel's built, it's going to be quite awesome to actually have a place that the community can actually walk in the door and go somewhere. But right now, it's, we're all by ourselves, so we're over 1,000 feet from the nearest residences, quite, quite separate from them, and then really surrounded by these industrial buildings that seem to have sort of been evolved into Facebook buildings for the most part over time. Jump to the next slide. Looking more specifically at the site itself, you kind of keep that same orientation from the last slide in mind. We have two facade signs and one smaller monument sign. The facade signs are mostly oriented towards the public right-of-way, wanting folks, as they come up towards the hotel, to become oriented. Oh, yep, there's a Citizen M, I know where I'm going. We're going to make that clear towards the Bayfront as well as Chilco, and as maybe like an Uber or Lyft pulls into the hotel, they're going to know where to take us. And then the monument sign is the one kind of shown there in black. That is really just exclusively kind of inwards-facing. That's that moment where we're going to welcome our guests once they've made it up to our front door. Go to the next slide. Just wanted to show you a little bit more larger-scale built example of the facade sign there. So this is one of our Parisian properties. You can see the facade sign there. We typically aim to be about a story tall with that, with that M. This one is actually quite unique, and at the other side, as soon as you come up out of the subway, you see that red M. You can't see anything else at the hotel, but you see that red M, really welcomes folks and lets them know to cut across this, this part of Paris and head towards our hotel. Then we can go to the next slide. We can see the details of what was in the application and what was in your staff report as well, but these are the details of the sign. So some of what has happened to the sign since we were last here in April is we, we made it slightly smaller, because our original interpretation of the, the letters was that it would only apply to the word Citizen and Hotel, so we wanted to get those within that 18 to 24-inch range that you guys have in the guidelines. Ultimately, as you see in the staff report, the M is being considered a letter as well. You know, arguably, maybe it's just some shapes, but yeah, it's, it's an M. It stands for mobile within the Citizen M, Citizen Mobile branding that we have. And then, we did kind of keep it at this size because we felt with the more distant orientation to the nearby streets, this was about as small as we could go and still get some legibility, particularly if people are going 50 miles an hour past on Bayfront. We had to go a little bit larger. I mean, definitely an 18-inch-tall M is, once have worked. So that's why we're here at this size. If we could jump to the next slide. This gives you a bit more, you know, the building's there now, so we can get a really sort of an in-person view. The M is photoshopped on there. You can see there, yep, thank you, person with the pointer. We are, that's shown to scale with what's presented here today, so you get a sense of its relatively unassuming presence. Jump to the next slide. We can look from the neighborhood side and really see there, this is from that, that new park that is on, on the campus. You can see that the building is practically invisible. It's fully constructed there. This was taken just a few weeks back. Yeah, we're, we're not going to be able to see the signs from here. It's actually kind of facing even the other way, so none of the signs are pointing towards the residences and the buildings quite far as away as well. We jump to the next one. This is going to be our, our monument sign. And so this one, I think, is really important to us and the experience that our hotels offer, and that we try to be a little bit of that comfortable hotel that people have been elsewhere worldwide. And it's, it's pretty cool, honestly, if people have been on a long journey, they get to our front door, we welcome that big Citizen M. People stay at Citizen M's because they, they like us, like they're seeking us out sometimes, and this is kind of a fun way to, to see people. They're stopping at that sign, they're taking pictures. That's really that, that mark of welcome that we offer our guests. We jumped to the next slide. You can see the details. We've, again, made a slight modification here to be a bit more in line with the Menlo Park guidelines, and that's been the addition of that black band across the bottom. Originally, we sort of raised it up off the ground about, about 10 inches. There was a desire to keep it as a formal monument with no sort of elevation, so we added that panel there. Otherwise, same thing, we're putting everywhere. And to point out, if it's not clear in this image, the only lit part is the, the letter. So the black is a, just a metal field unlit. Same could be said for the other signs on the previous screens. We're only lighting those letters themselves and the logo. That more or less wraps up the signage piece. I just wanted to flip and give a brief preview. This goes back in time to the last time I was here in person, which was January 2020. We had this image on the screen, and this is the art piece. If you saw kind of at the end of the staff report, we've recently determined that the, the size and location wasn't explicitly approved in any of those previous meetings, so we're going to be back in front of you just to tell you that it's the same size, same location as before, 20 foot by 40 foot. We've made some good progress with the community in gathering some proposals. Those are rolling in right now. We've actually got two of the final three coming in, so we'll be ready to take a look at that final size and placement here. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll see what happens. So, thank you, and happy to address any questions.
Thank you so much for presenting in person. Do I, before I go to public comment on this item, does anyone from the commission have any clarifying questions, either for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Eric.
Thank you for your presentation. My question through the chair is actually for staff. I was not, I'm new to the planning commission, so I wasn't here for previous times when, when you were here, and I'm wondering if there was anything that prevented us from approving this sign or the art project in, at prior reviews, which would have made it not necessary for the applicant to present in person today.
Thank you for your question. The, the reason that we're looking at it this evening, and we've got it on the agenda this evening, is because we did not notice it for previous meetings. Other items were addressed in those agendas and notices, but not, not the sign review specifically. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes my question.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move then to take public comment on this item, please.
Thank you, Chair Harris. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on the public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine by calling in on the phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And at this moment, I do not see any comments in person or online.
Okay, let's give it 20 more seconds. Okay, still no hands, correct?
Correct. I can confirm there are no public comments.
Okay, in that case, I will close public comment and bring it back to the dais for any comments and questions, and then ultimately a motion from the commissioner. Who would like to say something? Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I actually should have asked this during, just during questions, so through the chair, if I can ask the staff, just for my clarity, I was also not on the commission when you came through the first time. Really, the only reason that it's here is that it's red, right? Not if it was a blue sign, it wouldn't be here? Is that right?
Thank you for your question. That is part of the equation here. We also have lettering size that's been included in this agenda item, and basically, there is a guideline in the sign, design guidelines, that requires between 18 and 24 inches, and if it exceeds that, it's another potential trigger for sign review. So we've included that with this agenda item tonight.
I see. Okay, thank you. Since the shapes resemble an M, that's why it was triggered? But if it was like more abstract and didn't stand, like, then it wouldn't have triggered it?
So I'll take that question. We city staff have looked at the logos similarly to lettering. We city staff have looked at the logos similarly to lettering in, in any signage. So we would be looking at that kind of 18 inch height max for typical signs with 24 inches for larger or for greater setbacks, busier right of ways, being kind of the secondary max. We would apply that or have applied that to both letters and logos.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments or ultimately a Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you Chair Harris. One, I want to thank the applicant for coming back this evening. You know, as I, as I see the presentation and then I'm referencing the staff report pages three through five. To me, the context of these logos and, and signs certainly are well contextualized within the, the scope of the building. Virtually every angle they look to be very appropriate for this hospitality property. So for that reason, I will make a motion that we approve, we adopt the resolution and approve per the staff report attachment A. Thank you.
Commissioner Riggs.
I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Barnes and I would like to second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the table to approve the resolution to approve the three illuminated signs for the staff report. And if there are no other questions or comments, we will take a vote. Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So with that, thank you very much again to the applicant. The motion is approved. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next item in our agenda, which is G, a study session. We have only one item, G1, which is 795 Willow Road, the Menlo Park Veterans Affairs Campus. And this is a request for a study session for a proposed three-story, 62-unit multifamily affordable housing development located in the PF, that's Public Facilities zoning district on the Menlo Park Veterans Affairs Campus at 795 Willow Road. The proposed affordable housing development is being evaluated for consistency with the R4S, that's High Density Residential Special Zoning District. Study sessions are not Sequo projects. Do we have a staff report on this item and would the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Thank you Chair Harris. We do have a staff presentation to start things off. And then following that, we will have an applicant presentation as well. Just wait for a moment, we'll have the presentation up shortly and I'll begin. Thank you very much Vaughn. So to start things off, again, my name's Matt Pruder, Associate Planner with Planning Division. And tonight we'll be talking about the, excuse me, affordable housing project at 795 Willow Road, which is on the VA campus, the Veteran, Veterans Affairs. We go to the next slide, please. So tonight is a study session. It's a study session item that is involving R4S compliance. And this is basically an opportunity for the planning commission and the members of the public to provide feedback on this proposal, along with the public comment period. No actions will be taken this evening, but the comments and feedback provided will be taken in by the applicant and city staff. And that will be a part of this R4S compliance review. I would also add some next steps following all this. We will have the Community Development Director making the determination for the R4S compliance. Go to the next slide, please. So a little bit of context, this is a proposed affordable housing multifamily project totaling 62 units, of which 60 would be for very low income households and two of which would be for manager units at market rate. And the project is being compared on this site to the R4S zoning, which is because of the fact that it's a housing development, we're using that zoning district and its guidelines and standards for compliance review. And, and basically this review is necessary from the applicant's perspective in order for them to compete for state funding as well as certain tax requirements as well. And we can go to the, you can see here, I'm sorry, on the left, we have a rendering of the proposed building and below that's the site plan. And I would also add, I apologize, but I meant to add that it's near the intersection of Willow Road and O'Keefe Street, kind of in the southeast kind of corner of the VA campus. And across the street, it's close to the Silicon Valley International School, kind of in that area, not too far from Willow Oaks Park. And we go to the next slide to close things off. And I should say thank you, I'm sorry, but I thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions and the applicant will be available as well. They'll have their applicant, sorry, their presentation following questions for me and they'd be happy to assist with further context on their project. Thank you very much.
Did you want questions now or would you like to have the applicant present first and then we can take clarifying questions?
Through the chair, you're welcome to provide clarifying questions now for me as a commission if you'd like, or if you prefer, we could have it after as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any clarifying questions for staff at this time? For Mr., Commissioner Eric?
Thank you through the chair. I would like to ask, in your slide, you said that next steps would be for the Community Development Director to provide their support. And from reading the staff report, my understanding is this is not a formal review, but the applicant is asking for a letter saying that we generally support it. So I'm curious why it's the Community Development Director and not the Planning Director that would issue that letter?
Sure. A couple of things to note, I'd like to clarify, it's, it's technically a letter stating compliance and not so much a letter of support, just to be clear on that specific nuance. And then regarding the Community Development Director, the Community Development Director is the Director of the different divisions within Community Development, which includes the Planning Division. So they oversee the Planning Division as a whole. So they would kind of be the supreme authority on the decision-making, I guess, from the department perspective. Thank you.
Thanks for that question. Any other commissioners before we move on to the applicant presentation? Okay, I'd like to bring up the applicant. If you have a presentation for us.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Cynthia Luzod and I'm a project manager at MidPenn. This evening I'm presenting the Veterans, Veteran Housing Project located at 79 Willow Road. I'm joined by Abby Goldware Potlory, the Vice President of Housing Development, Elizah Malaban, and Project Associate with MidPenn. I'm also joined by the Project Architect Team from Van Meter, Van Meter Williams Pollock, Elaine Wong, Rick Williams. And finally by phone, I'm joined by the Landscape Architect Leah Farley of Jet Landscape and Arborist Kathleen Nagley of Eschelus Consulting. Next slide, please. So just a bit of background on MidPenn. MidPenn has over 50 years of experience building and managing affordable housing communities throughout the Bay Area. We've developed 124 communities and about a third of these are located right here in San Mateo County. We also have a deep history in Menlo Park. We manage a total of four communities serving 209 households. This includes Sequoia Bell Haven, Willow Court, Willow Terrace and Gateway Rising, which is currently under construction. And we believe that providing affordable housing doesn't end with just constructing the building. So we're, we are affordable housing developers, but we're also long-term owners, service providers and stewards of the community that we build in. Next slide, please. In 2019, MidPenn was selected through a competitive process by the Veterans Affairs to develop supportive housing directly on the VA Palo Alto Healthcare Campus. MidPenn and the VA are working together to transform the underutilized parking lot and open grass area outlined in right on the screen into 62 affordable homes for veterans and their families who are formerly homeless or at risk of homelessness. And then this is something that the VA has done before. Willow Housing, which is the, in, in blue on the screen, was developed by Core Housing and managed by EAH. And it's located around the corner from our site. It's also located on the VA campus and also serves veterans. So the VA has been a great partner and, you know, we're excited to build off the experience from Willow Housing with them. And then the site was also identified in the most recent housing element as a housing opportunity site. The housing element allows us to do a few things. It ensures that the city can count these extremely low-income and very low-income units towards its RENA goal. It also gives the project a zoning framework to follow. As Matt mentioned, we're following the R4S zoning. And third, it allows the city and MidPenn to take advantage of an established city process rather than create a unique review process that would be really specific to this project since it's under federal jurisdiction. And then finally, we recognize that the site interfaces with the public from both a visibility standpoint and because the project will tie into some utility, some city utilities. We're also going to be long-term neighbors with the community. So coming to planning commission was important to both MidPenn and the VA. Next slide, please. Okay. One more, please. Thank you. So we are creating 60 affordable homes for veterans and their families who are earning between 30 and 50% of area median income. So we're going to be serving veterans like Ron, who is a MidPenn resident in Sunnyvale at Onazuka Crossing. His story is similar to many others who have fallen into homelessness due to some event that has caused them to lose their home. For some, it's losing a loved one like Ron or a job or needing to pay health bills in lieu of rent. So this is an opportunity to house those who have served our country and to continue our work to reduce homelessness. And given its location on the VA campus, it's an exciting opportunity to bridge health and housing. Future veteran residents, many of whom are already coming to the campus for a variety of services, will be able to walk directly from their home to the VA campus to access the services that they're already receiving. And then in addition to those, those services there, that they'll receive through the VA, they will also be supported by MidPenn's onsite services staff. Next slide, please. Okay, so last year we engaged in intentional community outreach. We spoke with stakeholders, council members, neighborhood groups. We shared information about the community and listened to what the community had to say. We also hosted a virtual neighborhood community meeting last summer. And what we heard was that generally there is excitement around affordable housing for veterans, that the community was interested in tree preservation and that there was a curiosity around service, services residents would receive. And then just to kind of recap, we've been meeting with the VA on a bi-weekly basis over the last few years. So they've helped us navigate some of their own requirements and some of the site boundary parameters, including certain clearances that we've had to meet and that we're working within. And then over the last two years, we've also worked with other city departments, the Fire Department and West Bay Sanitary to ensure that we're building a community that fits within the city's framework. Next slide, please. Okay. And so here we have just some current photos of the site. The top two are of the site taken from along Willow Road. And then the bottom photos are images of the campus that kind of informed our design that we'll get into in a second. So next slide, please. Before I hand it off to Rick Williams from Van Meter Williams Pollock, I want to note that beyond providing a safe and permanent place for veterans to live, our approach has been informed by three goals. So one, to bridge health and housing by locating supportive housing on the VA campus, provide a seamless design transition from the VA campus to Willow Road. And then finally, to preserve trees and as many trees as possible by placing the building in the most open area of the site and by creating courtyards that celebrate the existing trees and minimize the need to reduce them. Of the 125 trees on our site and near our site, we're preserving 94 of those trees and 72 of those are heritage trees. So I will go ahead and just hand it off to Rick. Thank you.
Thank you very much Cynthia. Rick Williams with Van Meter Williams Pollock. We are really excited about this project. It's a continuation of providing affordable housing particularly focused on veterans and being so close to services, it's really important. We look at the overall context and really think of how the building should sit in this particular landscape. Next, please. And we really think of this, this development is really a building within the trees. There's, it's got a wonderful landscape around it. It's kind of have an open area with the grass where there was a former building many years ago. But we're seeing this really as being one of kind of patching and repairing an area that was a combination of parking lots and a building that was removed, that it was just kind of left vacant for many, many years. So we want to connect this to the pattern of both the campus while also thinking of it as a, a front and a transition to the rest of the city of Menlo Park and, and the Willow Corridor. So we're really trying to minimize the impact on the, on the trees. We located the building, kind of pushed it uptight against the lease boundary so that we could push it as far away from the street as possible. We have a combination of natural landscaping, which kind of goes along Willow Road and then, and then proceeds into a community garden and additional trees that we've placed along the frontage there. And then we have a more formal entry for residents and visitors that come from the parking lot or from the pedestrian connection along Willow to the street to have a real formal connection into the complex and kind of create some of that tradition which the overall campus structure had at one time. While we tried to maintain as many trees as we could, we've kind of replanted the parking lot, which is somewhat in the same place that it is now. And the one thing that really did impact a few of the trees is by providing a driveway which is at the top of the site above the, above the building. It connects in with the additional access to other buildings along the campus. And this was a requirement, a specific layout that the VA gave us. So it did impact a couple of the mature trees and particularly some of the oaks in that area. But we tried to minimize it from the placement of the building and the landscape and the parking. And we feel that the replenishment of the trees balances the loss of the few trees that we weren't able to maintain. Next, please. As I said, it's really going to be mending the landscape and Jet Associates has really done a wonderful design, which really has a combination of meandering pedestrian walks through the landscape to having quiet solitude locations for thinking and contemplation and community building with small groups. And then it has the energy and activity of the community garden, which is really the focus and the centerpiece of the area. So we have some formal open spaces, some natural landscape with meandering walkways. And then the really kind of working active garden. And if any of you have visited the Veterans Housing in Colma that we also designed, it has an extremely active group, which is really focused on the, the community garden and they enjoy the healthy food that it produces. And it's, it's, it's an operating, almost like operating farm all the time. And so they really enjoy that. And that's really the centerpiece of the overall site plan. Next, please. The building design tries to build off of that landscape. It isn't, it, it has some meandering to it as well, but we have a formal entry at the bottom right-hand corner with management offices that survey that entry for security. They can see people walking from the street and they can also see people coming from the parking. We have a nice lobby, has a two-story space. Management offices look out on that. And then we have a community room with kitchen for activities, which also expands out into a more formal open space and then a play area as well. As was mentioned, we have predominantly one-bedroom apartments, but we do have seven units, which are two and three bedrooms. So this mix was developed really by the VA checking on what their families needed, what their veterans needed. So that was a big impetus is to have a small cluster of family-oriented units as well. Most of them though are predominantly single or, or one-bedroom units. You can see how the building both respects the open space, but also starts to shape the community garden and the fruit trees that are planted in, in that area. So you'll be able to see into the daily life of, of the veterans community as well. Next, please. As I mentioned, this is really a building in the landscape. It's not trying to be an urban building, which is hugging the street and creating a street wall. It's really a building which is trying to transition from being part of the open campus to the, to Willow Road and providing articulation and massing, which breaks up the scale of the building while also kind of nestling in the the building while also kind of nestling in the spaces that it creates within the site plan, as I discussed before. So if you're viewing, going a kind of northeast corner of the site, you are coming, you're going from across Willow, you look at it, you see the trees, you see a couple of highlighted areas with some additional color, which are individual, small massing elements of the building. The entry has a trellis walkway along it, and you can see, people can be seen walking along to the entry from there. And then you get a hint that there's something going on with the courtyard on the left side with another accented massing element embracing that. Next, please. And then lastly, this is probably the most visible view of both the building and the courtyard, kind of the southeast corner view, or southwest corner view, I think actually, where you look into the, you look into the courtyard, you have a small two-story element. That is the closest area to the street. It's about 10 feet from, technically from the lease line or property line, but that is another 20 feet away from the street as well. So it's really about 40 feet away from the street curb, so it isn't really coming in and really engaging the street substantially. It's really nestling in and protecting some of the courtyard. We then have a couple of large, simple masses in the building. We have the red ones as highlighted there, which are kind of little highlights at the entry, and then at the two edges of the courtyard. The main building in the back is a drop, is just a three-story mass. It has a base and a middle, and then it has a top, which is a little lighter color. It's highlighted by kind of a two-story window element combining it, and then a one-story element at the top with a clear top to it. That's a parapet, which hides a whole bunch of solar panels, because this is going to be an all-electric building, so we're trying to maximize the solar on the building. We've minimized the articulation in it, which, out of respect to the rest of the campus. Most of the buildings are actually fairly simply masked. They don't have the articulations that you would see if you were doing a street frontage building, because we're just trying to have it be a backdrop to the courtyard and the trees and the landscape. And that face of the building is between, at the closest point, 65 feet from the street, and at the far corner is 85 feet from the street. So it's a very far setback. There's lots of landscaping and trees in front of it, and it's just trying to be a backdrop for the open space. So that is our strategy to the overall development. You have a larger packet that you received. I didn't want to go through it and wanted to provide the opportunity for you all to ask any questions or make any comments you have. And if you have any additional questions for us, we'd gladly answer any of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight. Before we go to public comment, are there any questions, clarifying questions or comments Okay, I don't see any, so let's move on to public comment for this item.
Thank you, Chair Harris. At this moment, I do not see any public comments in person or online.
I do see one hand online.
Yes. Okay. So we have Kathleen Daly. Kathleen, I will give you permission to speak. You have, you're allowed three minutes to speak, and you do not have to provide your name or address with your public comment, but feel free to do so if you choose. Thanks.
My name is Kathleen Daly. I'm a member of the Willows community as a small business owner. Thank you, Chair Harris and commissioners, for an opportunity to speak. There is now a potential project up for study session regarding housing for veterans at 795 Willow. Thank you to MidPenn for bringing this project to fruition. I truly remember the joy and excitement years ago for the housing project at 605 Willows Built for Veterans. Everyone was very proud, and it felt good to watch the ribbon cutting. This new project supports necessary additional housing for veterans and their families. Let's do right by veterans in need and get this housing built. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any others? I don't see any on my end.
I do not see any online or in person.
Let's go ahead and close a public comment. We'll bring it back to the commission. So as this is a study session, there is no motion. We're just going to provide some comments to the applicant as well as ask any questions that we would like. So who would like to speak? Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I do have a question that I think is most appropriately directed to MidPenn, if I may. And this has to do with how we balance the noble goal of having an all-electric building with the inevitability of PG&E blackouts. More important, I think, at least in my opinion, are blackouts in the winter, but of course we have rolling blackouts in the summer. I'm wondering what the capacity of the backup power system is likely to be and what kind of system that will be.
Good evening, Abby Goldler-Putlory. I'm Vice President of Housing Development, and it's a...
It's too tall for Rick.
That's okay. We have lots of those.
Okay. I'll just hold it. Yeah, I think that's better. Okay. Thank you for your question. It's a really great one. It's something we're looking at a lot now as we move to the all-electric, and on most of our, every new community that we build in our pipeline is going in that direction. And there's a couple of things that we're looking at, trying not to install individual backup generators at every single property, which would really be cost prohibitive. But, you know, some, looking at some ways to have some backup battery power that would maybe power a smaller space, such as our community rooms that Rick pointed out, so having a place where residents can gather, and if needed, so that you could have a, it might not be every unit has the full backup, but at least we have a place that is safe for the residents. One thing that's coming to mind here is that we are on the VA campus, and we haven't had that conversation with the VA, but I assume that they have quite a bit of backup generators, but I'm not 100% sure on that. So it's something that we should certainly, we will certainly continue to have those discussions with them.
I think that's a good idea. In terms of food service, on the one hand, because to suddenly have 62 residents who need to be fed is going to be an impact on the VA and on the kitchen. Since the kitchen has some history, I'm going to assume that it's currently gas, but also if there are plans to turn the kitchen to electric, then the VA and this project cumulatively will have almost a crisis. You know, just reflecting five months ago, for example, three days without cooked food is, qualifies, I think, is a crisis. And so I'm glad to hear you're working on that.
Yeah, thank you.
And then I would have a question. This is not so much a question, I think, as a prompt, so it would be to city staff. And this has to do with looking at the traffic situation on Willow. That intersection with Hospital Drive is challenging at certain hours of the day. It would appear that the traffic signal system, while it has the input for the system to know whether people are waiting to turn left, whether they're waiting northbound as well as southbound on Willow, whether there are, whether there is traffic crosswise that is multiple cars or single cars. Somehow that information is not integrated, at least from my observations on a roughly weekly basis. And I wonder if the city has any plans, this seems as good a time as any, to upgrade that traffic signal. So that would be a question for staff.
Through the chair. So that's a very good question. I don't think we are prepared in the Plan Division this evening to give an answer. We can certainly follow up with Commissioner Riggs and the broader commission about any potential improvements at that intersection. Those would be separate and apart from this project. And just to clarify, you know, those would be any city-sponsored improvements, you know, separate from the proposed housing development project. There would need to be coordination with any improvements at that intersection, given that an access point to it is from the VA, a federally owned and operated site. Just to add some clarity there in terms of the coordination. However, we can certainly follow up separately. I don't have that answered tonight.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple questions. Some of them probably more suited to clarifying questions, but I'll load them all in here in this section of this evening. I'm going to go through the chair to staff. So I'm going to start with what I think is happening and then ask some questions related to it. So what we're solving for is understanding whether, we're solving for facilitating, or the city is solving for facilitating a letter to the Veterans Affairs, that this project would be in general compliance with local regulations, and those local regulations are R4S, High Density Residential Special. So as it relates to that, when we talk about general compliance with local regulations, what's the context in which I should be thinking about general compliance?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Barnes. The idea behind general compliance is that, you know, we're looking at these standards and guidelines, and I think a lot of it is contextual in some cases. And we also, I would like to acknowledge, you know, we're looking at a property that is federally owned but within the city limits. And so it is a slightly, I think, maybe different operation than an R4S property that is zoned entirely within the city as an R4S property. And so we're making this effort with the applicant and with the VA site, I think more broadly, to understand how the project relates to that set of requirements, and, you know, I think in making the best effort to work towards the compliance. And I think a lot of the general compliance is about attaining something that is, you know, generally within the range of certain standards and thresholds and that kind of thing. Just to kind of start as an opening question. I don't know if you had more direct questions on that subject, but I'm happy to help with that as well. Thank you.
Got it. So general compliance being largely compliant, and that's my term, largely compliant with local regulations as it relates to this. So when the staff report says what is being put forward here does not strictly comply with setbacks, parking modulation, and frontage landscaping, but it generally complies with the intent and the spirit of the R4S, could you just say a little bit more about the languaging behind intent and spirit, and maybe kind of re-saying what you just said, but I just want to understand how staff is interpreting intent and spirit?
I just had to think that one out a little bit. But yes, I think to clarify with respect to certain elements of this development, we're looking at setbacks, for example, the modulation requirement. Those are moments where, you know, this project is achieving as, you know, close as it can, given the fact that it is trying to provide high-density housing in this area, in this context. And it's, you know, understanding several constraints that the site endures and has to kind of take on. And so there are limitations with the setback in the positioning of the building, for example, that kind of inhibited some complete setback distances to be achieved. And I think also other factors with the building footprint, you know, in terms of how the modulation requirement is being treated, is also symptomatic of kind of the same, you know, discussion item of trying to understand the constraints and work as close as possible to achieving something that can still provide an effective, you know, high-density development within this area.
Got it. So you're contextualizing, as you just said, what they have to work with, the site that they're working with, and what they're proposing, understanding the limitations or some of the uniqueness of the site, in getting to something which is generally or largely in line with, and I'll use the staff report, intent and spirit of what the R4S is intending. Does that sound about right?
That sounds fair. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I want to say that I am very supportive of projects which bring 100% affordable into our community. And with that, there's also, I think, some, well, let me just ask some questions, and I'll assist of the applicant themselves, MidPenn Housing. What is MidPenn's thinking, through the chair, I'm sorry, to the applicant? MidPenn's thinking about outreach, the need for outreach, the target for outreach, the role that it plays? And I'll say that when you were talking to the outreach slide, it was certainly electeds and appointeds and Menlo Park-based advocacy group, but I didn't see anything in there which talked to the community, which talked to what would normally be on a project, if it wasn't ministerial streamlined, you know, it would be a 500 or 1,000-foot radius or 2,000 or some type of community events. It could be onsite charades, it could be whatever it looked like. If you would just illuminate me a little bit about your approach and the need for that to the general resident population.
So in addition to kind of the, you know, city council members and those kinds of stakeholders that we did speak with, we did reach out to Menlo Together, where we got a little bit more of kind of residents that, you know, are part of Menlo Park. For the virtual neighborhood meeting, we did do, I think it was a 500-foot radius outreach, where we sent mailers to anyone that lived within 500 feet of the project site. So we did have some residents or neighbors join the virtual community meeting. And when we were speaking with, you know, council members, we did kind of ask, like, are there specific neighborhood groups that we should reach out to to get more in touch with, you know, residents that are one-on-one? Menlo Together was one of them. But beyond that, I don't think, kind of what we heard was that there, there weren't as many, like, specific groups that they recommended we reached out to. And maybe Abby, if you have anything else to add. Okay. I don't know. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and you have some follow-ups related to that.
Sure.
So what would be your, given what you're solving for in terms of what you're asking the city of Menlo Park for, what would be the, why would you be doing, how do you look at it? Why would you be doing the outreach, and what would you look to accomplish with the outreach? And how would that inform anything as it relates to this, given that this seems to be a determination by staff? Given that this seems to be a determination by staff as to whether it's in general compliance, which may or may not have any relation to what the community thinks about it. Just tell me a little bit about why you wouldn't be doing outreach and what you, what you would want to accomplish with it.
Sure. Yes. Thanks for the question. So the reason why, I mean, just to kind of back up a little bit, it's from, from Mid Penn, from our perspective, it's something that we do for every project. So I think whether or not it would have, was required by the city, it would, it would have been something we would have done, which is kind of what happened, where we felt it important to, to hear from people if there were major concerns. You know, one of the things we did hear was that tree preservation was really important. And so that was, it was just, I think, a matter of being able to get feedback and then incorporating if we did get any kind of major concerns or things that people really liked about the design when we presented it or had questions about, you know, who was living there. So for us, I think our goal was really to have a touch point with, with the community if there were major concerns or questions that came up. And then kind of through our process, we didn't have a lot of major concerns or questions that did come up. So that was just kind of the result. But I think our purpose was really to, to make sure that we understood if, if there was anything concerning from the neighborhood.
Thank you for that. And with, with that understanding, I think 500 feet is a very short radius. Given that, if you think of where this sits on Willow Road, everything behind it is VA property in and of itself. So the 500 feet that you'd be reaching would be across the street and in that neighborhood. I think that this, if community engagement is an objective, I think a much larger radius, 2,000 feet is not, certainly for projects, is not unheard of. And I think 1,000 feet. And given where, again, this is not concentric circles. This is, you have an entire half of a circle that doesn't have residences in it. So I would, I'd contemplate if community outreach is important to you. Now, I'm not saying that it is, because I'm just using what you're telling me about, whether it is or is not. I would think a more robust community engagement would be absolutely do justice to this project and do justice to the community if in fact is what you're trying to solve for. Because I don't think, I don't think that was the right level of community engagement for diligent outreach, is what I would say about that.
Okay. I appreciate, yeah, we appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And then while I have you, it could be to Mid Penn, it could be to you. So in terms of the, the population on the site, it is going to be 100% supportive. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then it'll be primarily what, HUDDVASH vouchers primarily for the project?
So we've been awarded 35 HUD-VASH vouchers for the project. So it's a little more than half.
And then the other will be just PSH or what?
Yeah. The other, the rest of the, the households will also be veteran households. They just won't have a voucher when they move in.
So it will be neither tenant-based or project-based? It'll just be ELI families?
That, outside of the 35.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and not all of them will be ELI. It'll be ELI and VLI. So up to 50% of AMI. There could be some, outside of the 35 HUD-VASH voucher holders, there could be ELI households. There could also be VLI households.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Okay, just saw two hands up and I'm not sure which one was first. Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I wanted to just share my pleasure tonight, to be here tonight, talking about one of our key housing element sites. This is number 64, if I've got my notes correct. And so I appreciate that while this is not necessarily the typical site as it is federally owned, I welcome the opportunity to learn about it and to discuss with you guys and to discuss with staff as well. So I have three questions. The first, I'm going to probably through the chair, direct to staff. It's a question about the Affordable Housing Overlay. And my next, my following two questions will be through the, through the chair to the applicant about public feedback, just a follow-up question, and also about the fence and the fence line. So I'll start with my question through the chair to staff. This particular site in that, in its context, in the housing element, was contemplated analytically in the, with the overlay and a density multiplier. And I was curious as to whether that was considered as part of the analysis here.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Schindler. So with respect to the AHO overlay, Affordable Housing Overlay, this project is not exceeding the maximum density at the base level. And so it's considered base level with respect to the R4S zoning. And that threshold is 30 dwelling units per acre. This is just below that at 29 and I think some change. And so because of that, it was not applicable in this case. Thank you.
So, and as a follow-up question, if, if it had been proposed at a higher density, would the benchmark have been different?
Potentially, yes. I, I think we would have explored that with the applicant team and, you know, potentially, I mean, it is a range based on income level. There are different nuances to that, but yes, that, that could have been the case.
Okay. Thank you. So I think this is, again, as I started, as I, as I kicked off with, this is a fantastic opportunity because we've got a landowner who is engaged and supportive of a lot of the values that are represented in our housing element and a lot of the specific programs that we have for protecting vulnerable communities. We've got an experienced and enthusiastic developer. And we've got a fantastic number of support teams involved here from the architect to the landscape side of things. And I appreciate that there has been sort of an initial round of community outreach. I support Commissioner Barnes' feedback that there really is, almost isn't such a thing as too much community engagement and awareness, particularly in context like this. And as someone who is particularly invested in making sure that the public is aware of and enthusiastic of what happens with our housing element, I think this is a great example of where we can go public and we can sort of, it's, it's a win. It's a success story. And it's a positive story on pretty much every front that I can think of. So being public is fantastic. The places where you guys, the, the organizations, individuals, and community members that you gathered feedback from, the summary of their feedback was that it, at a high level, their requests were about preserving trees, considering a density increase, questions about the parking ratio, and then questions about support services that the residents would receive. To my eyes, the, the documents that I've gotten, you've nailed the tree things. There are dozens of pages about that. I feel like that's been well documented. And the logic behind the parking ratios is, is well documented by the comparison to similar, similar developments. I actually was hoping that you could just go into a little bit more detail on the other two. The consideration of a density increase. And then just a little bit more about the support services that residents would be receiving. And I think in this case, it's worth differentiating between the medical and hospital support services versus the, the Mid Penn support services. So since those were community questions, I'd love to just get a little bit more detail there.
Thanks for that question, or those questions. So in regard to the, the density increase, it is something we explored with the VA. So from the get, so a little bit of background there from the get-go, the VA did tell us, you know, they wanted to see between 50 and 60 units on this site. And the reason they targeted that unit range was they were basing it on the demand that they were seeing from Willow, Willow Housing around the corner. Because basically, all the referrals for this project are coming through the VA. So they wanted to make sure that they were right sizing a building for kind of the demand that they were seeing. And so kind of numerous times, I think, when we heard that from the community, that feedback from the community, we checked in with the VA and said, hey, this is what we're hearing. Does this, is this still, you know, the number that you're seeing? We did this a week ago as well. And so that, that, the, that 50 to 60 range is something that they, they feel very positive, that they feel very certain about. So, but I appreciate that, that question and the exploration for even more density on the site. And then for services, so the 35 units that have HUD-VASH vouchers will have case managers through the VA. And, but on top of kind of those services that they'll receive through the VA, which I think is a, is a mixture of, you know, medical services, behavioral health services, things like that, we will have Mid Penn staff, which is what I alluded to in the presentation. So we're planning for one and a half full-time services employees. So they'll provide, it'll be a combination of just kind of general services. So general vocational and educational support, independent and life skills developing, development, including like food prep, computer learning, exercise and nutritional help. And then there's also the, the supportive services. So one of the things that our supportive services staff does is they create individualized services plans with residents to kind of mark what the residents' goals are and to create a plan to help them achieve those goals. So whether it's like, you know, education or finding a different job or, or something like that, they kind of, they help them along the path for that. And so other direct services are, you know, crisis intervention, linkages and referrals to other local agencies that are more specific in kind of the, the services they provide. And then just, you know, ongoing onsite support staff. One of the, the services staff members that's onsite will be also living at the property so that there's ongoing support even outside of business hours when it's needed.
Thank you. That's a tremendous addition, and just in terms of color and the level of support and services. That sounds really amazingly positive, particularly for, for that, that, that community, that vulnerable community. And it's very complimentary to a lot of the things that the housing element names in programs in support of some of those, those goals that we have. So my final question I mentioned was about the fence. So there have been multiple references here tonight and in the document about this property being a, a transition into Menlo Park, right, sort of welcoming in, on Willow Road. But also an acknowledgement that the space needs to be comfortable and a safe haven and green. So I think that fence plays an important role in ensuring the, the comfort to the community. But it's also just going to be right there at the road. And there's going to be, you know, there are thousands, thousands, if not tens of thousands of cars that are going to see that on a regular basis. The plans don't yet commit to detail on the fence. And we're not going to, I'm not going to personally hold you to anything, but I am interested is to know what's under consideration. Is it a solid fence? Does it have some sort of breakage in it? Is we talking about something that is more natural, which to me would seem more in sort of alignment with all of the other design elements, like an unfinished wood? I'm just sort of curious what the thinking is, because I'm going to see it a lot.
Yes, yes. Thank you for that question. And I'll kick us off and then maybe Rick, if you want to add anything that I don't touch on, feel free. I was wondering, I have a slide on, like a backup slide on the fence material. So one of the things that I think we're kind of heading in the direction of is we don't want, you know, a wall. We don't want, we want it to be somewhat permeable so that there is kind of a visibility in and outside, while also preserving the fact that it is, it is for safety too. So we want to kind of balance the two things. We don't want like a million feet of just a giant wall without any way to see through it. So what we're looking at is, thank you, is, these are inspirational images, but really just kind of your classic ornamental, like metal fence. And so that's what we're kind of envisioning along Willow Road. There's, at the entry level, or at the entry gate along Willow Road, which, or at the, there is, sorry, there is a gate on Willow Road that we, I don't have a good visual of yet, but it's something that we imagine will kind of create a little bit of variance for the, this, this type of gate. But this is, I don't, I guess this maybe hopefully gives you kind of a sense of the direction we are heading in. And then Rick, I don't know if you want to add anything here?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that gate that she referenced, which is kind of on access to the entry with the parking and the courtyards and everything is connected with all the meandering. That's where we think we can do something special, where we can have an element. We can either use, we use a lot of wood trellises through the landscape. So we'll probably change out the columns there to be hefty wood and then add a trellis on it so that the gate is kind of embraced by that. There may be a few other opportunities for that in a couple of locations where we have a, a wood post in, in, in series in a few areas. So we want it to be a warm and friendly, and it's tough to do with a, a fence that is required to be six feet tall. But we're going to do our best to try to minimize that as well as kind of strategically try to have the landscaping kind of blend in and out with it. So it isn't like you have the landscaping right up against the fence on one side and you don't on the other. It is also the property line. So we'll work with the city on how we handle that transition and edge and how we can possibly in certain locations have the plants grow on the fence versus other places and not, without creating a wall. So that it's a, becomes something that isn't just that as consistent as I think your concern is. Okay?
Thank you for sharing that, at least even the preliminary thinking. I enjoy seeing this picture because it isn't a solid wall, sort of all the way along the property. That's it for questions for me.
Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. I have a few comments and a couple of questions. So I'll start with my comments. I really, I'm also excited to see this, that, you know, in what I've seen so far, it certainly seems to comply with the intent and spirit of the R4S zoning. Why? You know, it has a thoughtful site plan. It has project-enhancing kind of landscaping amenities. The design of the building is responsive to the neighborhood context, even the way the roofline pitch is lower on the street side. And then, you know, the long-term supportive housing model, it makes sense to me then that the unit size would be a little bit more generous on a per, you know, the density per acre. And so that's great that there's sort of this ability to make that pencil out too, given the unique partnership on, on the VA site with federal entities. So I guess my question is pretty minimal, but I'm curious about project like this, that some of the units are geared toward families and even the ones that aren't may have children. If, you know, if there is any information on the student generation rates or the school district that this property would, you know, be part of.
Thanks for that question. So it's in the Ravenswood School District. This is what the property is in. And I don't have, or I guess maybe to clarify for the, were you asking for like stats on the, the number of households that might have children or, or more?
Yeah, if there's like any kind of comparative EIR student generation rate.
Yeah.
It's okay if you don't know right now. I imagine it's pretty low. But just so that, you know, I imagine that might come up as a community concern.
Yeah. I don't have that data now, but it's definitely something I can ask the VA and see if, you know, on that ways list that they're referring to, if kind of what they're seeing in terms of the households that are on it. I think one thing, I know this is not necessarily what you asked, but one thing I want to add with the services that are provided is, the conversation I've had with resident services is because there's basically 10% of the units are going to be the two and three-bedroom units. And it could be for families. It could be for veterans with live-in aid. So one thing we're going to do kind of the first year is monitor and understand the residents that are living here. So, you know, if there are more families with, or more households with children, to kind of do a better assessment also about like the types of services that we might provide there. And so I think part of it is like, there's, there are a little unknowns right now, but I think we can get a little bit more data from the, the VA. But thank you for that question.
Great. Thank you. That wraps it up. I think the other questions I jotted down are, were covered in earlier comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this? Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. Even though this is just the first study session, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to make a couple more points. One is, and I hope no one takes this politically. This is meant to be functional. In terms of outreach, a group like Menlo Together is very significant to our is very significant to our city in a variety of ways, but I would not put them at the top of the list who to speak to about a housing project on Willow across from one particular neighborhood. No one there, for example, is elected or appointed. I do think that Mr. Barnes has prompted a very good alternative in terms of outreach to the most adjacent neighborhood. Having said that, I'll have to admit to a prejudice in favor of a project like this, a heavy prejudice. I've been hoping to see a project like this for decades and I'm just so glad to see it here before us that I find it difficult to ask any questions about the nature of your fence or your program. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Eric.
Thank you, Chair Harris. Through the chair, I'm not sure if this is for staff or for mid-pen, but just looking at the map of the project site, if I'm reading it right, this project would occupy the western part of the site. But as I'm reading it, there's nothing planned for the eastern part of the site, which is also a parking lot that I think gets very infrequent use. So I'm curious if staff or mid-pen have any understanding of whether or not the VA has future plans for that as we consider this site.
Thank you for that question. I just want to clarify, are you speaking to the, so we have our site, it's like Hospital Plaza, Willow Road, and our site's on that corner. Are you speaking to a parking lot outside of that, that particular site? I just want to make sure I'm speaking to the right thing. Maybe we can pull up the, I think it's the project information slide.
Yeah, I'm looking, it's labeled C11 on the, in the.
Is that on the staff? Oh, no. Let's see. Oh, it's on the landscape plan. That's, okay. So that's slide eight, if you could, if you don't mind bringing that up. C10, or maybe I'm wrong. Sorry.
Through the chair, just to chime in, we are working on trying to get that slide up. It may take a minute or two. If there's a way to clarify, maybe if I could ask a follow-up question to the chair to the commission. So if you look at the existing aerial, there is a parking lot at the corner of Hospital Plaza and Willow. Is that the parking lot in question? That might help provide context for the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the, and please stop me if I'm already stating something you know, but that parking lot that's currently there basically overlaps with the one that we're planning. So the 55 spaces of surface parking lot. But you're asking what, if there's a, if there's a plan for that space? Oh, yes. Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, it is included in the site plan. So that parking lot is for, right now it's used for overflow parking for the VA staff, but it's going to be veteran, or sorry, resident parking, VA parking, and then, sorry. It's going to be resident parking, staff parking for our future community and then visitor parking. So residents might have, you know, lemonades or just services coming through to the site. So that parking will, will supply that parking for those people.
Okay.
Did I answer that? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then I have a second comment, which I don't think can be addressed by anyone here tonight, but I'm also really excited about this project and bringing this into the community and on the theme of bringing this development into the community. That part of Willow Road is somewhat difficult to cross if you're a pedestrian from the Willow Oaks neighborhood there. So I would encourage, I think it would probably be the city in the future to think about ways that we could bring that development truly into the community by making it more possible to cross Willow Road and visit what looks like a lovely site. Thank you.
Thank you. To staff, I wonder if you have any plans or thoughts of plans for that pedestrian and just pedestrian safety in general at the site?
Yeah, so I'll take that question. We'll need to follow up, staff will need to follow up with our transportation team for this intersection more specifically. However, there have been a number of improvements on Willow Road for biking, pedestrian safety throughout the last few years. And those are things that the city, city staff, with the direction from the council, continue to look at. So I'll follow up or our staff, our team here will follow up with the commission. We already have a question about the intersection operations. We'll also look at the pedestrian connectivity across as well and follow up with some more details on if there is anything planned more broadly and more, or excuse me, more specifically for this intersection.
Thank you for that. Other commissioner, oh, were you, were those all your questions?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Anyone, oh, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Couple points. One is, for the record, I want to be clear that when I was, when I am talking about community engagement, I don't have a vision of community engagement as a process for throwing the project to the wolves and having it deconstructed by the community and all kinds of bad things happening. Community engagement has a really constructive role to play in the community and projects get bought into, projects get supported and projects create ongoing goodwill in the community when community engagement is done and when what is called community engagement is done. Because people, people can smell a hide the ball exercise of whatever that looks like. And I'm not inferring that that's what you're doing. But I want to be clear that community engagement often helps improve and inform a project. So that's the reason why doing it and doing it right pays dividends down the road, from my experience. The second question I have for the applicant is to the question of the Willow Housing Project. So the previously constructed project on the VA site, I do understand that was an EH project. However, have you spoken with any of your colleagues? Or how would you answer the question of, great, any lessons learned from the Willow Housing Project and how might that inform what you're doing here? How would you answer that question?
Yes, that's a really good question. It was actually one of the first things that we did when we got awarded the site was to meet onsite with the staff that worked there to do exactly that, to kind of get some lessons learned and make sure that we were improving upon, you know, something that had already been done. So one of the things that we heard from staff was that I think Willow Housing is primarily made up of studio units. And one thing we heard from both staff, separately staff and then the VA, was that it was really difficult to lease up the studio units for some reason amongst veteran households. So one thing that, you know, we did with our community or the future community is to not include studios and to do the one bedrooms because there was such difficulty and there was a preference for the one bedrooms that were available at Willow Housing. Another thing that, you know, that they kind of provided context on was their parking. So they have about 60 households at Willow Housing and I think about a little, either half or a little less than half parking spaces. So 30 to, 30 spaces to 60 units. And I think they said basically that this was perfect for the residents living there. If anything, that was ample parking for residents, but that with kind of the staff and visitors coming onsite, the onsite staff, that it wasn't, they could use more. And so that was something we took into consideration when we did the parking plan for this site. For us, I think it's like one to point 09, almost one to one ratio for parking. And, oh, another one, another thing that they had mentioned was, was just around kind of the, was around property management and just a preference for having kind of a front desk person, a desk clerk that's there upon when, you know, residents enter, when visitors enter. It's something I think at the time when we were speaking with them, they didn't have. And they said if we had a wish list, we would build in the budget a desk clerk. And just to have kind of a friendly face that's there when staff is doing something else or is engaging with a resident. So that is something that we have built into the budget to have people there, to have a desk clerk there in the weekdays and weeknights and some points during the weekend. So I would say those were kind of the three key takeaways. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. And before you leave, this, probably my inability to understand, not your clarity of explanation. The staff report refers to 60 units. Oh, I'm sorry. The question I'm getting to is related to affordability levels. And the staff report refers to 60 units being at very low income, right? And we know that very low income is 30 to 50. Are there zero to 30 ELI units? That we spoke about that a moment ago, did we not? And could you just again tell me the affordability levels so I can write them down for the project?
Yeah, so the, we, the, sorry, the project is serving up to 50% of AMI. You stated that. We're also serving the, we are serving the ELI 30% range as well. So that's the up to 30% of AMI. So yes, so to answer your question, we are serving ELI and BLI.
And then the breakdown of that, if you would bear with me.
Um, let me see if I, I'm not sure I have that on hand. Yeah, I don't, sorry, I don't have that stat, but I'd be happy to follow up with that. I think, you know, actually, no. So I think, I'm just kind of racking my brain. So about roughly 20% of the units at this site are 30% AMI banned. And then the rest are 50%. And one of the things that we heard from the VA and that kind of influenced the way we, the way we built the different income bands that we're serving at this property was that veteran households, this is what we were hearing from the VA, is veteran households often are connected with different sources of support, whether, and that's, sometimes that's income or some sort of, maybe not income, but monetary support, which often gets them to kind of more of that 50% AMI range. And so we wanted to make sure that we were building those units so that they weren't, we weren't building something that residents couldn't actually, you know, meet the requirements of. So I did just want to add that nuance of there was some intentionality around the, the AMI bands that we were building for, for the future community.
Got it. And yes, I think that the VAS, HUD VAS values skew a little bit higher, closer to the 50.
That's right, yeah. That's what we've heard as well.
And the, and to your point about studios being hard to fill, folks will wait for the one bedrooms. We're finding that a lot as well in terms of foregoing a studio and just waiting for one to open up. So that makes a lot of sense. That's all for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners? Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I concur with other commissioner comments and appreciate all the questions from the other commissioners. I just want to say, like others, that the building sits very well in the landscape. It's clear from the presentation and even from the site plan, not in a bad way, that the building works with the limitations, some existing structures and some clearances that you mentioned required by the VA. And even that pinch point at that southwest corner where there's no trees, it's been, it's been turned into a bonus where there's no shade over the community garden. And sometimes you'll see buildings right up against, sorry, other way around, sometimes you'll see parking right up against buildings. So that very generous distancing between parking and building for anyone who happens to be coming from a car is just very generous and appreciated. So no questions, just wanted to share that thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Are there any more questions or comments? And also, I guess to staff, do you feel that you've gotten the feedback that you were looking for from us or do you have any other questions of us?
Thank you, Chair Harris. We have taken in the feedback tonight and we appreciate it all. We don't have any specific questions regarding that. I think we have the information we need and as does the applicant. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I, this is a really exciting project for our city. I'm thrilled that we'll be able to house some much-needed, housing for the veterans within Menlo Park. I love the landscaping, the green space, the community garden, the dog park, the solar, the all-electric, the fact that you've reduced the number of parking spaces. I think it really does fit the spirit of the R4S that we're looking for. I would have been wanting to increase the units, but I appreciate the explanation of why you landed at the number you did. So I think that's, that's all I think we have from the DIAS and I'd like to thank you for coming. And I think I'm going to close out that, that agenda item and move on. So moving on, the next agenda item is item H, informational items. And that includes the future planning commission meeting schedule of June 5th and June 26th. Mr. Prada, would you like to provide an update on what might be coming to those planning commission meetings? And if you have an update on the combined meeting with the planning commission and the city council on the housing element, that would also be appreciated.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Harris. A few updates for the June 5th meeting. We were still working on the public notice, so we'll finalize an agenda by the end of the week. However, we're, we're looking at pretty confidently a single-family home and architectural control on Sand Hill Road, as well as the annual general plan conformance review for the city's capital improvement program. You know, June 26th is a little more speculative at this time. We're, you know, three, four weeks out from that public notice, so we don't have any items that we're, we're tracking that we'll like, that we can confirm this evening that would be on it. However, more broadly for the commission's benefit, we are tracking a number of large projects that will be coming to the commission in the next few meetings. Take that as the next quarter or so. That does include bringing back the architectural control packages for some of the Willow Village items. You know, potentially the office meeting and collaboration space and the town square component, as well as parcel two, which is a residential building that includes the grocery store. Staff's working to combine all four of those on a meeting. And so we're trying to figure out what, what agenda that may be able to be handled on, given the large scale of those four items. We also are looking at potentially a notice of preparation release in the near future for a life science project, 1005 O'Brien Drive, that the commission reviewed as a study session a while back, as well as the initial actions from the commission on the multifamily development project at 123 Independence Drive. So that's the combination of townhomes So that's the combination of townhomes and apartment buildings. So we're tracking a number of other projects, but I wanted to highlight those. Those are things that staff is working through the agenda management process, and so they'll be coming for in the near future. I don't have specific dates yet for those items, but I wanted to highlight them, even though you asked specifically about June 26th and June 5th. I want to just identify there are a number of things in the works over June, July timeframe. The second part of your question for the combined housing, combined planning commission, excuse me, and city council meeting on the housing element update, we are still working through the details. We are tentatively looking at June 20th as a combined meeting date, and so our staff will be following up with the planning commission in the near future to confirm that day along with the council. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Are there any other commissioners that have a question about the informational items or other, other informational items? Commissioner Barnes?
I do. Question to Mr. Prada. In my experience in the past, when the agenda item comes up for the capital improvement plan, I know that I have in the past asked the question of, okay, great, here's a capital improvement plan, is there any way to break this out in terms of jurisdiction, right? And this was even before district elections. This was essentially, great, this money's being spent or these areas are having plans, programs done, infrastructure within it, where are they and how is the money being spent? Is there, if I ask that question again, will I get the same blank stare? Or is there the potentiality of getting a different result if I ask it before the meeting? Or is this something I should just stop asking about?
So first, hesitant, again, too much of a dialogue for a non-agendized item. So I'll preface any answer with that in our city terms here and can definitely try to get my attention if I go too far here. Appreciate the comment. You know, we are still in the process of developing that staff report. I can't make any confirmed statements today, one way or another, but I think your comments noted by me, we'll, we'll take it, we'll look at it with public works. I'm not sure we can do that at this point, but we appreciate the statement.
Thank you, and I'll be sure to ask the question again. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prada, and thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for giving the little warning on that one. Appreciate it. Any other commissioners for informational items? If not, we are going to adjourn this meeting at 8:53 PM. Thank you, everyone.